It is now time for the work session on the capital improvement plan and 4:45. And we'll turn it over to the city manager for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just asked if we have copies of it and I thought they were on the table, but apparently they're not. So you had extras. Okay, perfect. And as you can see, Kyle is going to present. And they are on your iPad. I was just informed as well. So. All right, before Kyle starts, and he will give you all the details, just one thing that I wanted to say that we talked about and really focused on, and you know from your presentation regarding our investments, the importance of keeping what I'm going to say, the core investment intact and being mindful of that because that's how we pay for our capital projects is through our investments. So, you know, we watch the market and watch, really, our investor watches it for us, the market to make sure, you know, that we're staying in the realm that we should be staying in. So with that in mind, this was developed as well as all the projects were developed and Kyle will delve into those. That's where we are.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I'll just jump right in. I'll probably start with kind of the quick spiel that I do in the beginning of my presentation to the board and the commissions, which is kind of a quick overview. I know none of you probably need this, but it helps me slide right into the five-year CIP. But capital projects at the city, there's several planning and approaches to accomplishing capital projects. Of course, there's the five-year CIP that we're talking about tonight. That's the long-range planning document. It describes and prioritizes our major capital projects. There is the capital budget, which unlike the five-year CIP as a planning document, the capital budget is where we actually appropriate those funds through an ordinance to accomplish those particular projects. Like previous years, the first year of the five-year CIP, FY26, is intended to be this year's capital budget. So we intend to have a resolution adopting the five-year CIP as a planning document and then a companion legislation and ordinance appropriating funds for the projects identified in FY26. That would be our capital budget, projects we intend to accomplish this year. Other capital project-related legislation, we do annually a legislative priority list. That's where council gets to select particular projects to include in our grant and funding requests to state and federal delegations. And then, of course, capital projects can always be initiated and started through a mid-year appropriation. So at any time, if a project or need arises, we can bring an ordinance to council, ask for the funding to accomplish those projects, and then get started. Some projects, like the utility fund, for example, we don't include a utility projects in a capital budget. Those are always a mid-year appropriation. You know, this year with the five-year CIP, it's relatively modest compared to years past. And that's intentional. It's not all, it's not full stop. You know, the engine's still running. We're still in gear and moving forward. It's probably a different perspective. The approach would be to perhaps bring more projects in as a mid-year. So you'll see as we get into the capital budget, the FY26 projects, that there's some phase projects where we're going to do kind of the design phase first, fully understand exactly what we're going to build and how much it might cost, and then potentially come back to council and ask for the funds for the construction phase. It could be in that FY26 year, or it could be in subsequent years. But that's the approach. Again, the five-year CIP, it helps us make responsible capital asset investment and management decisions. It allows us to take into account scheduling, fiscal constraints, manpower considerations. We don't want to have two mega projects line up in the same year or have the inability to plan for major projects like a roof replacement, which we have imminent coming up here that we have known about and have been trying diligently to find outside funding and grant funding and are still trying but have yet to be successful. Projects on the five-year CIP are typically $100,000 and up, but not always. Sometimes we incorporate other projects and planning type expenditures that are smaller, keeps them on our radar. They can be important to include for other reasons. Some projects on the five-year CIP are included but will require outside funding. There's value in being on an adopted priority plan by the community and by the council, particularly when we apply for grants and other funding. It's a recognized priority. A good example is Fireweed Street. It's a big-ticket item and it would have a big impact to our community. And it's a priority project, but it's not something that I think the administration would bring forth for millions and millions of dollars unless we had some matching funds, some outside grant sources. So we hope to leverage its priority in our community to obtain grant funding. Each year, we kick things off with reaching out to all of our department heads internally. We ask for any changes, modifications, deletions to the CIP, any new projects. We want to look at estimated project costs. We want to know about operating and maintenance, cost implications, what are the ongoing costs associated with new projects, lifecycle costing, any funding sources available for those projects, the timing of the project, obviously, and then, you know, a description, justification, and any progress to date. I try to meet with each board and commission, provide the same kind of synopsis of the five-year CIP and the process and the planning, go over the existing plan, encourage them to reach out to me and others, and particularly the department directors for those boards and commissions for their input and comments on the five-year CIP. So again, FY26 capital budget is fairly modest. You know, we're looking at recognizing the city's recent outlay in our bond debt, like the city manager mentioned. You know, we're focusing on needs and not wants, but without sacrificing forward progress, right? We, you know, we don't want to say we're only doing critical projects. Everything's important. We are taking care of critical projects, say like a leaking roof, where we have assets underneath that roof that could be damaged. But there's also important projects like the library you'll see on here that we'll talk about here in a little bit that are deserving of some investment for our community and for our assets. Happy to jump right in to talk about projects. I'll take a quick pause there. If anyone has any questions thus far at all, and by all means throughout the whole thing, just let me know if there are any questions. You can just pause me and say, hey.
Mr. Carey.
Certainly heard what you said. I just want to look at 400,000, then following year, 2.2 million, then the following year, 7.5 million, then 9.1 million, then 12.6. And so I heard you clearly say that obviously, without additional funding, a number of these projects would be either moved back or again changed. So it's interesting, just the process because it certainly shows a great deal more spending. I just, I want to reiterate, I heard you say that in approving this, we're not making a commitment to this very large increase in expansion from our current budget without additional funding.
That's a great, great comment and absolutely correct. None of these, this entire document, including FY26, as the five-year CIP is a planning document, it's that companion ordinance that we bring forth that will actually appropriate those monies for FY26. And you're 100% correct. As we go further out in time here, the projects become somewhat less precise, and they also become less of a priority, but also less attainable, right? So some of those may require outside funding, and we need to start seeking funding for them. The ice refrigeration system at the ice rink is a good one, and we, hot off the press, have some new data, and that's going to be very costly. And so it's prudent to start planning now. So it's, we may not be spending 5.7 million in FY29, but we know that, what we know now is that there may be a $5.7 cost to replace that in the near future. So we're plugging that in. So, yeah, 100%. And some projects are perennially on here, and, you know, they're programmed for FY27 this year, and next year, they're programmed not for FY27, they're programmed for FY28. They just get, kind of keep getting bumped down, you know. So 100% correct. Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you. And this may be for the city manager. Some of these projects that are on here for both capital and utility projects, we've submitted for congressionally designated funds. Can you identify on here which of those we've submitted? And we know it's also not a given that we will get those, but it'd be nice to know which of these on the list we've submitted.
Thank you for that question. I don't have the document in front of me, so I'm actually going to look quickly at the list. One thing that we were notified of today, and I was going to report a city manager report, so we'll do it now, though, keep that going, is that Senator Murkowski's office notified us this morning, actually, our federal lobbyist notified us this morning, that Senator Murkowski's office did include Marydale in the recent CDS. That's new today. That is very early in the process. It's now been put in, and then, of course, all the subcommittees and all of that has to happen. So Marydale is in, I'm looking at, I haven't, actually, now that, so it was in the previous CDS funding, which was taken out by the federal administration. So that project was not funded in this past CDS request. Do I have another note for this? My apologies. Two things, I don't have it written. Two projects that we were notified are not in the CDS. And do you have those, Kyle? I do not have those in front of me.
The Wellsee Treatment, so two on the utility side. The other one, for the general fund, the shop roof, was one of our highest priorities through CDS requests, recognizing its priority and deteriorating state, and high price tag.
One, also, the conference room expansion was not put into the CDS funding for this. Next year, we were notified of that as well. Looking, yeah, at one at this time.
That has made the, is that what your question is? That is, our understanding right now is one has been transmitted to the subcommittee.
Has Representative Begged done any of them?
We have been not notified at this time. He did start his.
We did submit some, but we've not been notified if he has nominated any.
Right.
So we're still waiting to hear something from his office.
Correct. And he did start his process later than Senator Murkowski's office, so perhaps within the next couple of weeks. We're uncertain about how his process is working too, because it is a new process for his office. Your question, Vice Mayor Parker, I'm going down the list, and like I said, I don't have the other list in front of me. And 28, Marydale, but as I just stated, it is in the CDS funding at this time. Conference room expansion has also been on the priority list.
And then safe highway crossings, the signalization study at the Fieldhouse Ice Rink and Cape Beach intersection. So that's, this is kind of to be determined at the end. Priority is not yet assigned. It's kind of a catch-all. That was also one of our nominated CDS requests.
Well, see, treatment upgrade was also one of our requests. And then we have other requests that, like Kyle spoke of, there are more DOT requests that we work directly with DOT on, because ultimately, they're going to be making the decision about that. So the signalization and also the Burt's and Street and Sterling intersection pedestrian crossing there as well.
Question about that, if I may. Go ahead. Since that is a state-maintained roadway, is there any possibility that they might take that up and do that on their own eventually? Like, obviously, we could try to spur this along if we want it bad enough, but if we just say, you know what, we don't care, it's a state issue, will the state eventually potentially do it?
I don't believe they will unless we push it along. And that's part of the reason why you do see it on our priorities, because the one, the Burt Street and Sterling intersection, there had been a complete streets project that they, this DOT brought to us, but it fell apart really because of DOT. So I think, part of the reason that one continues to be on our priorities is the narrative part of it. We're continuing to have the dialogue with DOT and our legislators who are bringing the dialogue with DOT.
So is there responsibility to pay for those intersections? Does that fall on the city? Like, when we put in our intersection by the park, did the DOT pay for any of that, or is that entirely through city dollars?
We, we supported funding a portion of it, and we were able to reappropriate that because I do believe it was a CTP project that we nominated and were able to get on the Community Transportation Program funding. So it was entirely state-funded. But we, I think, I believe we appropriated a half a million dollars that we re-appropriated to our half a million gallon water tank that collapsed, but that was a few moons ago. So I'm a little fuzzy. But we did not, the city did not pay for that signalization. And in the case of Cape Beach and Arena Avenue, what we're seeking is large dollars to perform an exhaustive study that will demonstrate and show the traffic warrants that DOT needs to have in order to implement a signal there. And then, then there's discussion about who pays for it, not just the construction of it, but the ongoing operations of it as well.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a quick question on the Marydale reconstruction. You're showing it as in 2028, but on the backside for utilities, you're showing reconstruct Marydale utilities in 29, and it seems like those two should be hand in hand.
You are correct, Mayor. Those should be hand in hand, and somehow a movement didn't occur, so we'll fix that. And that was likely due to some of the ongoing discussions with the potential for grant funding. As the city manager noted, it was included in the federal budget, and the federal budget was never adopted. Continuing resolutions went on forever.
If something like that was approved in this session, it would take until 28 before we could actually do anything, or could it be moved, would it move to an earlier date?
Absolutely would move immediately. It was actually one of the questions from one of the congressional staffers was, how soon could you begin the project? And the answer was, as soon as the grant agreement was signed and the ink was still wet.
So it's possible that it could be maybe as early as 26 then, if it was approved.
Potentially.
And Kyle and I spoke this morning that part of the information we received through CDS funding is the different funding buckets, like Fieldhouse was USDA. This one appears to be coming through DOT. And we're going to be very tenacious about, how's that going to look, you know, when will we get funding, da-da-da-da, because it is our project and we want to make sure it remains our project and not become a DOT project because that would prolong the timeframe. So we'll be very tenacious.
That would be the fear I have, that it would get pushed further and further, further out, and probably double and triple in price.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parker.
So following up on the Marydale utilities, in the submission to the congressional delegation, was that cost for reconstructing the Marydale utilities included in the cost for upgrades to Marydale?
Partially. So the utility cost was purposely broken out, much like, I shouldn't say that, not like Fireweed, but it was purposely broken out for the purposes of going after separate pots of money. So utility-related money, as city manager Bauer noted, sometimes comes through different silos versus transportation. So the intention was to apply for utility funds through utility-related funding opportunities and transportation through transportation stuff. So the, we would still move forward and be able to accomplish the project if only one was funded. We would still seek funding for the other or use local funds.
So should the process work successfully and we were able to get the monies to reconstruct Marydale, we could then look at appropriating the funds to deal with the utilities at the same time, so we're not backtracking?
Absolutely, yes. We would, we would take care of all of the subsurface needs before we reconstructed Marydale. We would, we would seek outside funding to do everything our hopes and dreams would be subsurface, but we would make a cost-effective decision on what we actually do when it comes to impacts to the utility fund, if that makes sense. So it may not be a $900,000 tag. It may be significantly less if we think that that's what is prudent for that project. I don't want to say we're going to ask for the moon when it's a grant money, but, you know.
Go ahead.
I did want to follow up on your question. I do have, I pulled up the document. As far as legislative priorities, what was submitted is the mechanic shop roof replacement. And as Kyle spoke, we will continue to seek funding for that. It is the, one of the, for FY26 is the shop roof replacement design, and Kyle can go into that further. It is on there, which is the preparation that we need for the roof replacement. We, as you know, this has not made it into any CDS funding or any other grant funding that we've been able to seek. So we need to get all the exact costs for this in preparation for possible appropriation, a city appropriation. Cape Beach Road and Arena Avenue signalization, we spoke of that. Sterling Highway and Burt Street safety improvements. Saldatna Regional Sports Complex Conference Room expansion design, excuse me, Memorial Park improvements, which is under FY28. And those two that were pending, Marydale, as we've talked about, and Wellsee Treatment update. Those are the priorities for FY25.
Go ahead.
Okay. I will dive right into just FY26 projects here and kind of go over them in depth. We've got department heads and folks here to answer any specific questions, but I should have most of the answers. And then I can go forth with the rest of them, however you see fit, Mayor. The first one, storefront improvement grants, this is a recurring project. Supplemental funding for the program, the storefront improvement program. Whether or not it's included in a capital budget really depends on the current balance, and that depends on how many business owners have taken advantage of the program, which requires an investment for beautification of those property owners. And then there's a city match with programs and policies attached for max amount. That balance is getting low enough. We want to be nimble enough to be able to fund, I believe, two, at least two projects in the bank. So having this $15,000 in that account will enable us to be responsive to at least two applicants should they come forward in the next fiscal year.
Are we getting very many applications?
We are not at this time because there isn't, all the funding has been appropriated, has been used. So. Correct. For the current year. We were not able to open the June cycles. There's usually a June cycle because the funding had been expended, so we will open September. So your question, yes, we are.
The planning department and finance, in conjunction with finance, has a pretty robust document detailing the participation and the dollar amounts involved, how much investment the program has leveraged. So the mall invests 200,000 in new siding and lighting, et cetera, and takes advantage of, you know, 5,000 from the city. So we have that information available for past usage.
I just remember that there was one project that I think we funded, and then the building was sold and they took it all down and redid it to something else. I think that was the dental clinic.
I'll make a note.
Yeah, it used to be the Photoshop and.
Yeah, I don't, I'm uncertain about that particular project, but I can look into it. And we can, I don't also have in front of me the rules and regulations as far as a clawback period, should something change. That might be something that we should look into. Next project, library improvements. So this is one of those projects that I talked about as kind of a phased, you know, this year's approach was a pretty modest capital budget with the intent of being deliberate in coming back for, you know, the dollar amount for construction, what that might be and what it entails. The library has been totally absent from the capital budget for at least a decade, maybe probably 12 years since the remodel and expansion. And the thought process is, you've got a pretty new, freshly remodified building, and so you don't need any capital. Well, and Rachel's here to speak more eloquently about it. But they have not had any capital investment from the capital budget in some time. The expansion and remodel did enable a change in use and the expansion of services and programming. It's resulted in a different number of employees doing different number of things, and been highly, been a highly positive response from the community. And so this, you know, Rachel and team have, they brought forward some needs, and we did use a donation that came to the library and used those funds to hire professionals to assist with programming, some conceptual programming to meet the needs. Those specific needs include closing in some of the meeting and tutor rooms, creating a reading room wall where the fireplace is to kind of segregate the spaces that due to noise and talking and things of that nature, improving the circulation desk as it pertains to folks checking out stuff and getting direction. And then, you know, really, and then another one, relocating the family room so that it's closer to the kids' area and the reading area, and it will create storage and a better staff space down here. And then a big one is just work areas. Rachel can probably talk a bit more about the challenges of getting work done when you have, when you're out in the middle of the library with people walking around asking about Dewey Decimal System and other such fun things. So this, as envisioned, would be the design phase only. So we would hire a professional to help us identify and flesh out those exact needs and what those look like. Do the design, get it to 100% design, have a professional cost estimate. And then at that time, we can decide how much we want to do and when. Originally, we were thinking that we would phase it and do half the construction project in this capital budget and perhaps the other half in subsequent years. Phase it and do half the construction project in this capital budget and perhaps the other half in subsequent years. The ROM cost estimate is is about 600,000. There's about eight different items of work that that we want to address in the library. And instead, we think that it's prudent to design everything. And then we'll have a kind of a cafeteria menu of how much does this element cost? And what should we what should we do at this time? So the intention would be likely to come back to to council depending on, you know, fiscal resources, depending on manpower, other constraints, potentially do the construction project, you know, after we have the design 100% complete. So any questions for the library team? Excellent. Outdoor sand storage facility, this is a kind of a quick and dirty one. We were fortunate to get a state grant last year. We actually had two in the capital budget. One was the conference room design, conference room expansion design. That one was line item vetoed by the governor, but the governor did leave our sand storage cover in the capital budget, state capital budget. Unfortunately, when we refreshed our quote from some of the manufacturers of the fabric covered steel building, this is if you can envision a lot of the agricultural type buildings where there's steel framing members and a fabric that goes over it. It's not a conditioned space, you know, it's not heated. But that's where all the traction sand would get stored. Right now, we blend it with some salt and other chemicals to keep it viable in the winter. Sanding trucks put it on in intersections. We use a lot of it. We try to cover it with a tarp to keep the rain that we get in the middle of winter now from freezing it into clumps, smashing it into the back of the trucks. So this would cover it. This is simply a supplemental funding. As we got into the design and construction, cost escalation has exceeded the grant amount. So we're asking council to appropriate an additional $65,000 so that we can get that done this year, this summer. Shop roof replacement design, again, we're phasing this out. The construction phase is a big ticket item. You can see that down there in the following years of over a million dollars. The design, we're asking to appropriate $115,000. There's two, there's two pre engineered metal buildings out there and then a timber framed addition off to the side. In 2023, we hired Architects Alaska to assist with a existing conditions report. And we've got a fairly robust report that told us what we already knew. And and that is that both roofs have exceeded their useful life. Full removal of the roof assembly and replacing it with six inch insulated metal panels. We've got a cost estimate and a lot of fun. Infrared imaging of the building and the heat loss associated with compromised insulation, et cetera. So there's, there's an energy aspect to this too, and that's one angle that we've been trying to look into for grant funding. Is is there a way we can get some grant funding for this roof replacement from an energy perspective? And that's that's proving challenging. Laura actually brought a a funding opportunity through the IRS, actually, that actually involved tax credits that was fairly convoluted and didn't didn't fit the mold. So we're checking under all the cushions, though, to try and find construction. But so this project is is the design phase, again, to get that fully designed. One benefit from that is that we have a quote unquote shovel ready project. That's a term that's coined and sometimes is beneficial when you're asking for funding. You've got a project that can go into construction immediately. Any questions on that shop roof? It's, I encourage folks to get in touch with me and Scott and get a tour. If it's raining, bring a raincoat, even if you're inside.
Question?
Go ahead.
So in FY 27, that's just a guesstimate at this time, the one point?
That is.
For Funny River Roof?
That is, that's an estimate based based on the architectural existing conditions survey and based on the particular construction type and a proposed new roofing solution, the six inch metal panels. So yes, it's an it's an estimate. It's not done by a professional cost estimator, but it is done by a design team with the help of the city.
But that was done a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
It was done in 2023, but it was projected using a construction cost escalation. I don't remember what the figure was because I forgot the appendancy to the report. But it's on my on my desk for, I think we had a 2024 and 2025 construction timeframe. So I just use that same, that same construction cost escalation figure for 2026.
The way things are going, we'd probably expect it to be even higher.
Seven. It's interesting. This last one, I'll talk about the generator blows my mind. But I, there is some discussion amongst. Procurement folks and construction folks of some relief, some some material and and cost relief. Whether what that's due from, I don't know. And it's it's strange to hear that when we talk about all these tariffs. But there are some costs that are at least leveling up, if not coming down, and being a little more competitive when it comes to construction. It's anecdotal. We'll know when we bid something, but I'm hopeful that the the slope is not as steep anymore.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Good. Next.
The next one, police building standby generator. So as we all know, CES Station 1 is being relocated, brand new building, getting constructed on Wilson Street adjacent to the emergency operations building. The existing Station 1, emergency standby generator for that building also serves our police station. So when that existing CES Station 1 is becomes whatever it becomes, I think we're all curious. It will no longer be able to provide emergency power to the police station. Been in discussions with the borough, is the existing generator salvageable? How old is it? How many hours is it? Are we able to relocate it? And the consensus right now, we'll continue to look into that. But it's it's at this point, it's a, it's an old antiquated, say antiquated, but our plan is to install a brand new standby generator in the best location possible for the police station adjacent to the switchgear that will provide standby power for the police in the case of a power outage. We put the generator here at City Hall about 10 years ago for around 50, around 50, 60,000. And these are real numbers coming from Northwest Cummings for the generator size to appropriately for the police building, as well as some input from electrical contractors for the installation. So much more expensive than I had hoped.
Those operated on natural gas?
You can get either natural gas or diesel. There's pros and cons to to either one. We decided for this building to do natural gas. It's about as clean as you get. You don't have to have a huge tank that you have to continue to refill. You don't have the hazard of having, you know, both diesel storage. You do have to have regular service, bring, you know, a jobber service bringing in fuel. So gases is better. However, if there's a gas disruption, so there'd have to be a really big major catastrophe in the gas distribution lines, if if they're disrupted, then then you'd have a problem with with fuel. So it's kind of a, kind of a conundrum. For this building, we decided on gas. I believe for the for the police station, gas is the appropriate ticket as well.
Anything else? Moving right along.
Okay, I will. I got four more years to get through, but these are easy ones because these are, these are plannings. All right, no, I'm going to spend extra long on utilities too. Who do I have here that wants to talk about their stuff? Joel. I'll be much quicker now that we're getting into the the planning documents rather than that that capital budget. So Centennial KBEH, interrupt me if you've got questions, please. I'll probably be down looking at the spreadsheet. This master plan, $90,000, this is something that's been on the list. It's actually becoming more and more of a priority as we see more and more activity in that corridor, right? We've got, we've got equestrian stuff going on. We've got Little League, we've got our Centennial access that's kind of that's kind of crummy. We've got the new Fieldhouse, the ice rink, we've got 4H folks that are interested. So it's a really busy corridor. What we don't want to do is cork off, you know, long term needs, whether that's transportation with the signalization. So a master plan was conceptualized a number of years ago. It's been on here. I think it is increasing a priority. We considered including it in the capital budget. We decided that this isn't the year that the city and particularly the Parks Department has a lot on their plate. Again, the fiber CIP allows us to plan accordingly with manpower. We we want to do it right and and give it the attention it needs. This is probably not the year, but but potentially next year. So that's a a master plan for that corridor of KBEH. Playground equipment at Saltwater Creek, we cheated and put to be determined on that. And that's because playgrounds are crazy expensive. They also, you know, there's some planning and collaboration with the community and the Parks Department, the Parks Board that's going to be required before we can really get our arms around what that might cost. But we recognize that it's a volunteer built playground, which is awesome, and it has done great for a long time. But its longevity is declining and and Joel can speak more about rebar and spray paint and other other fun things that happens out there. So. Storm drain and street repair, kind of boring. We've got a problem child that it's so high that some years builds a giant lake and some years it doesn't. We've tried to camera it and the camera that we've used hasn't been able to get far enough. We do know that we've got a problem X number of feet in there. Scotty's got that dialed in. So a little bit of street repair and storm drain. Funny River Road shop roof repair, we already talked about that. Ice Arena Bleacher repairs is a new project. Joel has a list 19 pages long of capital priorities. This one rises to the top. I think he's got to have several hands that have to mechanic physically push this thing in, probably all at the same time. So it doesn't go in wonky, but I think bleachers are notoriously a pain. So this would repair motors and electrical system for that section. Riverfront Redevelopment Project. Again, this is a placeholder as we continue to get together and and try to advance our riverfront redevelopment plan. This is recognizing the intent and desire to implement something, whether that's a small, medium or large, probably small, maybe in between, a plaza, a trail, something where the city has site control that we can we can implement and move some portion of that forward. Library improvements is the construction phase. So we're going to do that design phase. We're requesting you do that design phase in the capital budget and then the next year or two, implement the construction phase. Royal Park Improvements, this is a, this is a follow up to last year's capital budget where we appropriated a modest 35,000, I think, that looked at signage, a little bit more planning and a few other elements. This would kind of be the construction phase where we did those improvements noted in the in the notes there. Road improvements, a pavilion, we've got a columbarium that's filling up. We've got a place for it that we may need to purchase and install a second columbarium, things of that nature. Marydale Avenue, we've talked about that big ticket item. New comp plan, this is the city's citywide comprehensive plan in Vention, Soldatna, 2030? I believe so. We completed that in 2011, so time flies. That's again, just programming, knowing that there's these costs and and really time, that that comp plan is going to take a lot of time from staff and the boards and commissions and the and the community to redo that. So we've got that on the horizon, planning for it. Homestead Lane Construction, this has been a priority for council and administration for some time. Again, trying to find outside funding, it's a big ticket item. This is the connection between Mullen Avenue at the Y and East Readout, right? So we all know there's a major problem with that intersection of East Readout and and the Sterling, particularly in the summer. A lot of people short circuit through Fred Meyer, which is private property and use the Signal at Devon. This would, this would connect East Readout with the signalized intersection of the Y through Mullen.
Any possibility of DOT funding for that?
We submitted a CTP grant for that. We made it, we were nominated and made it to the PEB, the Project Evaluation Board, and we got dead last. No, I shouldn't say that. We we didn't, we didn't do well in in when the PEB compared it to the other projects that were nominated. And perhaps it was just a tough year, not as much funding. But no, the answer is is yes, through identified programming sources, not as a priority of their own.
But we're still pushing for it.
We are still pushing for it, yeah. And a couple of years ago, we acquired the right of way so that we have control and that went through went through council. Conference Room Expansion Design, this is the one where we we have that beautiful rendering that everybody loves. Pretty self explanatory. Ice Arena Exterior Siding, this is a project that was on the CIP for some time and then it dropped off. And and it was a priority noted by Joel and his team. And it is something that now that we've got the new building next door, this would be staining some of the existing wood and then potentially installing some some metal metal siding that that kind of tied it together. So this is. Yeah, it's just a beautification of the exterior of that ice rink building.
Question about if I may. Given the age of the wood on that building, is there any risk of actually compromising it if we defer that a few more years down the road? I mean, it looks like it kind of needs it yesterday just to just to keep it from rotting.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe so. You know, as I noted, as we get kind of further out, they're less precise. You know, probably this year or next year, we'll we'll probably get out there with some tools and and get a better idea, you know, and and know if it's if it's not just staining or if it needs to move forward. But right now, we're expecting it not to be compromised in its current state. I I think a large portion, there's some cedar in there and some rot resistant.
Okay, good. I wasn't sure if it was.
Yes, but but weathered and fading, yeah. Karen Street Park Upgrades, another perennial project. That's the the park at Karen Street over there by Farnsworth Subdivision.
Are they still using the skateboard items there?
Yes. They're, yeah, for spray painting.
Yeah, that was funded by the Elks many years ago.
Yep, I see, I see, yep. And scooters, apparently, not just skateboards, but scooters. Maintenance Worm Storage Facility. This would be something that would be extremely useful in the in the winter. This would allow us our equipment to be in warm storage so that we don't have to go out and let it idle for 20, 30 minutes before we get it in the winter to go do stuff, just a space, a space thing. Now, here is a big ticket, exciting item, replace the ice refrigeration system, 5.7 million. So. Joel procured a a pretty robust, in-depth ice system evaluation study done by a professional engineering group out of Wisconsin. And we've got a pretty good understanding of what we have and some of the options coming forward. This literally came in a couple of days ago, yesterday, this week, I think. So. We've got a good understanding, like I said, of of the existing conditions and then some of the options going forward. And there's a plethora of them. And there's some good information that we've looked at that consider rinks and anchorage and elsewhere. So this would include the replacement for the refrigeration system. But there's also flooring considerations and dasher boards as well. I see questions.
We had a copy of that. Go ahead.
So have you thought about swapping the ice refrigeration system and exterior siding? And the, my thought is, is that it's more important that we have inside system functioning and that the ice arena is working. And if the ice arena, if we end up with problems and the ice arena isn't working, then why are we re-siding the building? So I I would recommend that we swap those and we do the replacement of the ice first before we do exterior siding.
That's an excellent point. I will, yeah, we'll take a look at that and see if we can strategize a bit better in that regard. There's such a disparate cost, but I I agree. It may not make sense to spend, you know, 300, 400,000 on siding if if that's something that we need to start saving towards towards the ice rink side. So I I agree, there may be some strategy, strategizing that we can do there and we'll look into that.
I would add, Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, so I know there's the study done on that facility and the. I was just going to ask, so I know um, there's the study done on that facility and the state of the compressor there. And we've been told that we are going to be getting the report on that and then your future. And I've heard murmurings of, well, we might have to look at potentially replacing that, but haven't really got a definitive answer. So seeing this on the paper tonight, I think is the first piece of like concrete information I've seen that we need to replace it. So since I haven't seen the report, what is the state? I mean, do we absolutely have to replace that? And if so, how much life does it have left? I mean, is this one of those things where, okay, it's failing now and we need to start bumping this up to Vice Mayor Parker's point? Or is it one of those things that will, maybe you get 10 more years of life out it, maybe start planning for it and it's going to be coming up on the horizon, but not right now? Or so, can I, can I go quick synopsis of that report?
Yeah.
Because I haven't heard any of this.
Um, the one thing, and, and Kyle and Joel speak to, but one thing, we literally got it yesterday, the report. So um, some of it, this was completed beforehand, before we received the report. And we really um, need to internally meet on it. But I, I agree, we can obviously share the report and the information. And we, this is one I feel that may totally move on this, on the C I P. It's been identified here, but we're going to go deep into the report to see how, where are we? And also I foresee what could be a legislative priority for funding, maybe even next year. Um, so all of those are on the list because we just got the report. But if for sure, there is some, I feel good information about the compressor system that I think Kyle and Joel can share. It is 40 years old, but there's, there are some good things about it, so.
Yeah, I'll give you the, I'll give the fiber C I P answer and then I'll let Joel talk a little bit about the equipment. But three to five years is what the expert said. And I thought it was prudent to slam it into the C I P right now. We got that information, let's get it in there, even if it, it keeps bouncing down. But sure. Very important for.
Well, I'd fully agree with.
Yeah, yeah.
It's getting.
So three to five years is what the expert's saying. And then there, and like, like C Manager said, it's a, it's a pretty big report and, and there's beaucoup options. And I'm wrapping my brain around ammonia versus CO2, or indirect versus indirect versus, you know, and the, the environmental side of things and the health, safety and all. So lots of stuff. So we don't have all those answers, other than the experts are telling us, you better be prepared to, to, to do major work on this in three to five years. Joel, anything to add from your?
Joel, could you speak to the maintenance that's been done that, that we believe that thankfully has been done and has prolonged the life?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, most of the major components are 33 years old. Um, typical safe life expectancy is, is 20 to 25 for most of the different parts and pieces. There's the refrigeration pieces, the flooring that we talked about, um, and then some dashboard and things like that. And we have been, we've been tearing apart the compressors every year and rebuilding uh, the top ends. Basically what you would do is some major repair on your vehicles every year to, to get in, take a look at it, make sure everything looks good. Typically that kit is about $5,000. This year they quoted it at 20,000. So because our system is aging, the, the access and, and the cost of repair is, is going up and going up fairly fast. The nice part though is refrigeration. Uh, we use R22. The cost of R22 was going up because it's no longer being produced. But as rinks uh, swap out to other systems, the R22 is becoming available. You can recycle it. Um, it doesn't go away, you can just keep reusing it and reusing it. And so there's actually, it's, the supply is more available now and, and we're seeing prices of, of that go down. Um, we still have 2,500 pounds of R22 in our system, which is a lot. Uh, last year we bought some at $54 a pound. So if you do the math, it's, it's still a big chunk of cash. I don't know if there was a second question that I forgot to answer.
No, I, from, not from me, but um, I, I, I normally the maintenance, I guess I would follow up on the maintenance. It isn't recommended that it's done every year, but the city thankfully chose to do it every year so that it would prolong the life. It's three to five.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, uh, I mean, for it to be at 33 years old and still running very well, Andrew Carmichael did do a lot of preventative maintenance on the system. Uh, we take care of it, you know, much greater than any other facility. Even in the, the gentleman that came in and did this report was very surprised on how well our, our refrigeration system is, is taken care of. And, and this is what he does. He goes around all over the world, um, doing these reports. We have been taking care of it, so it's not a neglect thing. The fact that we have had this maintenance uh, plan in place for a long time is why we're sitting at, you know, over 30 plus years on most of the pieces.
Does the report encompass questions about year-round ice versus not year-round ice?
We did, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
We did ask him to dive into that um, dehumidification. It was a little outside of the original uh, scope of the project that we had originally reached out to him about. So we would need to do a little bit more. But the fact that we do not have a dehumidifier in the building does, um, you know, that is a concern. And we are putting our ice in uh, in nine days uh, so that we can provide ice in July this year. And we will be monitoring uh, the building and the, the humidification in there to make sure that we're not jeopardizing the building itself.
Yeah, I'd love to know, um, just for future and for the public, um, to know basically what the costs, the pitfalls are with year-round versus not, or whether we can, this system will be able, or what we have in place would be able to sustain that um, year-round. And of course, when you guys are deciding what system to go with, taking into account one versus the other, that way we can communicate with the public on those decisions. Thanks, good job.
We're getting pretty close to the end of this, but this comment now, um, there's a number of pretty critical items on this list that are need to be, need to be addressed over the next few years. And I'm just wondering if we're reaching a point now where we should be looking at the possibility of a bond issue to accomplish some of these. You know, federal funding and state funding is, is getting pretty tight. And like I said, some of these items are critical and important to the, the operation of the entire city. So maybe that's something we should be considering and looking at uh, here in the very near future.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And that's the benefit of, of the capital improvement programming, just to know what we've got on the horizon, try to make informed decisions. Whether that is or isn't necessary is, will be, those decisions will be assisted by, by planning ahead like this. City Hall improvements, uh, that, that was on, that's been on the list for a while. That's a remodel for operating efficiencies. We're adding some workstations. We've got a uh, a rough, rough drawing of, of things that could take place. Uh, again, pushed out to FY29 and, and not, um, not something I'm working on right away. Crowded Black Program, uh, this is something that, that I've been excited about. And uh, this, I've got an RFP on my desk that we're going to get out pretty soon that will um, hire a consultant to do another road assessment. So we will look at all of our roads, create kind of a priority list of road improvements. This is, this would be a, a paving program where we identify gravel roads. Going from a gravel road to a paved road has a lot of benefits operationally, the community, et cetera. So um, having a plan to, to pave gravel roads, that's what this is. Here's the conference room expansion uh, construction project. We already talked about that. And then the Everfund South Fireweed Avenue construction. Huge undeveloped area in the middle of our city that is a, also has a collector street right of way in it. It would be fabulous for a lot of reasons to build that. It's just going to take a lot of money. So we continue to seek outside funding. It'll unlock um, housing opportunities, it'll unlock transportation improvements, a lot of positive attributes to that. So there's no question, any questions? I'll jump over to the utility fund. Which is also pretty quick and easy. Quick reminder, utility fund, no capital budget. We'll bring every individual project to the council for consideration if we deem it appropriate enough. APDS permit renewal, as you know, we've been working with D E C and EPA to renew our discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. We continue to work with uh, D E C uh, as well as our consultant on, on doing that. We're on the cusp, I would say, you know, hopefully by fall, late, late, early winter, um, we'll, we'll have some progress with the state on that. Um, and, and these funds are generally used towards uh, our consulting fees when we're working on a discharge permit. Readout Ave and Smithway Repairs, this is a project that the uh, DOT is leading for us right now. It's, it's in the design phase. It's potentially could go to construction next year. This was a C T P project that we applied for in 2021, maybe. Uh, it's been a few years. This is the subsurface work, again, taking care of a few fire hydrants and, and mainline valves. Here's a new project, industrial discharge and pretreatment study. This, this is something we've actually talked to some consultants, have some, some, some preliminary costs. This would analyze industrial users and floor drains in the city of Salatna and what particular uh, contaminants, what particular um, substances that we should be aware of and concerned of for our particular treatment process, our activated sludge secondary treatment for the city of Salatna Treatment Plant and our receiving waters, uh, which is the Kenai River and, and our discharge permit. So we, we need to hire subject matter experts to tell us exactly how much benzene is, is bad for our treatment and bad for our permit and bad for our receiving waters, along with a lot of other parameters that I can barely pronounce. So um, this is a bit overdue. It's something that, um, we'll be looking at our code. Our code has um, maximum contaminant levels listed out. Um, and there's some, some questions and, and um, anomalies, I would say. There's some levels that are drinking water and some of that's purposeful. And uh, some of, some of the contaminants are a result of uh, disinfection, they're disinfection byproducts. So by nature, when we disinfect our drinking water, these products are form and, and generally the sewage that people produce is coming from the water that we give them. So um, this will analyze, uh, this will analyze a bit of our source water as well as what discharge limitations we should have in our code. Uh, pH control, this is, this would, this would be uh, a part of the discharge permit renewal. Uh, we're anticipating um, a new permit may require a narrow bandwidth of pH for effluent before it's discharged. This would allow us to implement um, that pH control as well as monitoring. Uh, so we will be able to monitor what that pH is for our reporting requirements under that discharge permit through D E C. K Beach Manhole Upgrades, um, repair damaged and failing manholes along K Beach. This has been on there a few years. They're not in bad shape, but we know that they're there. Are we getting much water in them? There's some repairs to them, something that we want to do. The aerobic digester and well seat treatments. These are items that have been identified in our master plan. We know that they're um, some bigger projects. We want to plan for them, but they're far enough out that we're not, we're not actively pursuing those changes right now. Well seat, uh, we have, we've got metals, iron, manganese. Addressing them in our source water again can um, have a positive effect on our collection and uh, wastewater treatment.
Pause you there for a second because I saw Mr. Nelson had his hand up for a second and now it's gone away. So did you have a question, Mr. Nelson?
Apologies, I, yeah, hit that accidentally, so no questions.
Okay. Uh, new well site booster pump selection. This again is in the, in the water distribution master plan. This would identify um, some property kind of over uh, by East Readout and above. Just future proofing, should the city ever have the need to push water uh, up the hill and around on the Sterling Highway? We would need to have a booster station there, um, or possibly pipe water from our reservoir that's on the hill uh, by, by Turnbuckle Terrace. Um, so master plan says, hey, you might not need it now or in the next 50 years, but in the next 100, you might. So uh, land acquisition is one of those things you got to super pre-plan. A couple perennial projects, Centennial Park Water and Sewer. Um, everybody would be stoked to have water and sewer down there. At one point we thought this was ripe for grant funding because we got rid of, um, uh, we would be pumping sewage away from the river. Uh, but it, lo and behold, it hasn't, it hasn't garnered a lot of grant opportunities. But we do, uh, we do recognize that it would be a, a, a great project. Reconstruct Maridale Utilities. This, this will be put in the correct year so that we're not digging up a brand-new Maridale Street. Thank you, Vice Mayor. It was a good, good catch and an error on our part. Finally, last two refurbish Headworks Building. The Headworks Building is the first building that everything comes to our treatment plants in a whole. Sewage is all gravity-fed through, goes through some lift stations, but it ends up in uh, the Headworks Building. And then has two, three huge Archimedes pumps that raise it up. Some of the systems in there, particularly the grit chamber, is uh, near original. Um, that's where grit and sand comes out of it. We don't need to send that through a treatment system, so that's a big ticket item. And then the Fireweed, uh, South Fireweed Construction. Again, let's get some utilities in the ground, um, prior to improving the street. And then potentially uh, in, in incentivizing development, whether that's residential, what whatever we can, whatever we can do to improve it. So that was, I, I try to go quick and, and be less than five minutes late.
Any last minute questions? Seeing none, I do have one quick question. Homestead Lane Construction, if the city was to go ahead and, and move ahead on that, uh, would we have any I'll use the term interference from DOT on constructing that?
No. Both connection points are uh, city-owned and maintained right of way.
Okay, so connecting in, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep, and as always, uh, feel free to reach out to me, email me, call me. Happy to answer any questions, clarify anything.
Good.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll conclude the work.